Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call a regular meeting in the Buchanan City Council. The order asks first that you join me in a moment with a silent meditation prayer. Thank you. We'll respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bringing us to our guests. First, we'd like to welcome all Wesleyan college students here. It's a tradition, has been for many years, and we would ask you all, we're going to start right over here, to stand up, face the camera. We'd like your name, where you're from, and what your major is, please.
My name is Chelsea Elbin. I'm from Valleyburn, West Virginia, and my major is marketing.
My name is John Kiro. I'm from Laurel, Maryland, and my major is sports business.
I'm Bronson Clark. I'm from Grantsville, West Virginia, and I'm a public relations major.
I'm Tim Baham. I'm from Franklin, Pennsylvania, and I'm a sports business major.
I'm Daniel Haller. I'm from Phillipi, West Virginia, and I'm a master student with an undergrad in economics and management.
I'm Michael Smith. I'm from Milk Creek, West Virginia, and I'm an accounting major.
I'm Lars Daley. I'm from Illinois, Virginia, and I'm a marketing major.
I'm Nathan Whitaker from Bliver, West Virginia, and I'm a criminal justice major.
I'm Megan Henee from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I'm an accounting major.
I'm Brittany Abel from Orlando, Florida, and I'm a psychology major.
I'm Sarah Murray from Pogel, Maryland, and I'm a business administration major.
Robert Brosh. I'm from Charleston, West Virginia, and I'm a political science major.
Nathan Saville from Holbrook, Australia, international business and economics.
I'm Susan King. I'm from Fairmont, West Virginia, and I'm a business administration major.
Welcome. I hope we don't bore you too much. American Legion Mary Alborn, running post, Les Shreves, Peggy Shreves, and Dennis Corris.
Thank you.
If, Mary, you have the floor for whatever you want to do.
Let me just do this real quick, and I'll introduce you to post commander who's doing first. That's the good thing.
Good evening. I'm glad to see the youngsters out. I hope they don't take offense to the term youngsters, but compared to a lot of us here, that's what you are. When we have the opportunity to speak about Americanism, it's a good thing. We don't talk about it enough. Our preamble for the American Legion begins with "For God and country we associate ourselves together," and our organization is based upon four pillars. Those four pillars being national security, veterans rehabilitation, children and youth, and Americanism itself. Americanism is a characteristic which distinguishes our form of government from others. It is the recognition of the truth that the inherent fundamental rights of man are derived from God and not from governments, dictators, or majorities. Americanism is the love of America, the loyalty to her institutions, as the best yet devised by man to secure life, liberty, individual dignity, and happiness, and the willingness to defend our country and flag against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. Americanism is a vital, active, living force. It means peace and strength, and the will and courage to live as free men in a free land. It is not just a word, it's a cause, a way of life, and a very big challenge. It's an ideal of loyal patriotism, religious tolerance, righteous freedom, fearless courage, honest integrity, and an abiding faith in the commanding destiny of the United States. It is the fathomless love for the principles which led our forefathers to found this country. It is with these thoughts that I stand here today, along with Mary Alborn, post seven adjutant, and the Americanism chairman for post seven, Bob Post, and Peggy Shreve, the unit seven auxiliary Americanism chairman. There is no one more passionate about Americanism than these individuals. They would defend their ideals and beliefs to their dying day. Bob can define patriotism with just three words: love of country. And what you're about to hear and see was an idea that began with Bob two or three years ago, out of his concern where this country was headed. Bob?
Thank you all for having us come. Back in October of 2009, Frank B. Bartlett, post number seven of the American Legion, wrote and approved a resolution. Its purpose was to require that a class on patriotism be required in the curriculum of the secondary school system. I'm going to not read the resolution in essence of title. With a lot of work, this resolution was approved unanimously by our local post, District Three, the West Virginia Department of American Legion at its convention in July 2010. We worked with our local House of Delegates members with several meetings, with our state superintendent of schools, which were Steve Payne, as all of you know here in Buchanan, and later, Joey Marple. Each meeting, the social studies coordinator for the state, Joey Wiseman, was in attendance. On January 5th, 2011, there was a publication for all West Virginia newspapers titled "West Virginia to Incorporate Patriotism into History Lessons." After the Americanism Committee of Frank B. Bartlett VII examined the publication, we were not satisfied that it accomplished our intent. After going back to the state superintendent and coordinator for social studies, they reexamine our intent and approve what we were asking for. As a matter of fact, they approved more and went farther than what we expected, and approved a mandatory class on patriotism from K through 12 in the West Virginia Social Studies classes. We're very proud that we got that accomplished. These classes are to begin this year in the curriculum of the West Virginia school system. One of the things that Frank B. Bartlett, post number seven, agreed to do, to get testimony from veterans on what patriotism means to them, and to get from those veterans who will share some actual combat stories. The DVD we're going to show you, we feel, comes from one of the most famous Buchanan and West Virginia residents. It was written by Stephen Coons at my request, and we were fortunate to have Les Shreve II narrate this DVD presentation. We would request your help as individuals in getting veterans you know that have had combat experience to tell in a presentation what patriotism means to them. The DVD we're going to show you, we hope, will show all the grades, will be shown, rather, in all the grades from six through 12 in the state of West Virginia at this time. Come back to us.
We're going to try this. It's been one of those days for me. Michael knows what I mean.
"The American Patriot" by Stephen Coons. What is patriotism? Is it a good thing or a bad thing? Is patriotism alive and well? Or is it some fossil from the old days that we don't even have to think about anymore? What qualities do patriots have in common? And how would I know a patriot if I see one? America's had many patriots, and we'll talk about some of them, and from them, try to define the term patriotism. The patriot I revere the most was our first president, George Washington. He grew up in the mid-1700s in colonial Virginia, one of the 13 colonies on the eastern seaboard ruled by Great Britain. He got a decent education, excellent by the standards of the times, and could read and write and do math well enough to be a surveyor. He surveyed huge tracts of land in what is now Virginia, West Virginia, and Maryland. Virginia's governor commissioned Washington, a major in the militia, and sent him into the wilderness to help a private enterprise, the Ohio Company, build new settlements and posts for trading with the Indians. They ran into the French, who were expanding into the Ohio Valley. Soon, the clash of European rivalries exploded in America as the French and Indian War, and in Europe as the Seven Years' War. Major Washington, leading a company of militia, that is armed citizen volunteers, accompanied British General Braddock on his march to conquer Fort Duquesne, at present-day Pittsburgh. Braddock's little army was ambushed. He was killed, and Washington helped save the command. He was young. He saw the blood and smelled the gunpowder and learned some valuable lessons in military leadership. In the ferment leading up to the Revolution, the area around Boston, Massachusetts, was a hotbed of resistance to British colonial policies, which many saw as tyranny. You've heard of the Boston Tea Party, Samuel Adams and Paul Revere. You've probably also heard of Revere's midnight ride to warn the militia of the outlying towns that the British were marching from Boston to seize their weapons and gunpowder. It was there, on the outskirts of Boston, on the 19th of April, 1775, that American patriots first stood tall enough to be seen and heard around the world: the Minutemen. Farmers and tradesmen willing to fight with only one minute's notice grabbed their muskets and shotguns and assembled on the village greens in the path of the advancing British troops. At Lexington, they refused to disperse. The British troops fired a volley, killing a few. At Concord, the troops ran into more militia, and after a sharp exchange of volleys began their retreat. The British columns, now 1,700 men counting reinforcements, were fired upon constantly all the way back to Boston by militia members coming on the run, and some of the encounters became full-fledged battles. Over 250 British soldiers were killed or wounded at Lexington and Concord and in the retreat to Boston. Think about it. By firing on the king's troops, these Americans were rebelling against the king's rule, committing treason. The penalty for treason was death. All the farmers who had aimed a musket or shotgun at the red-coated soldier risked the death penalty if British soldiers didn't kill them outright. Why did they do it? Because they believed in the justice of their cause, had the courage to fight for it, and if need be, die. The next day, militia, common citizens who had elected officers and agreed to obey orders, began arriving from all over New England. They bottled up the British of Boston and dug in to keep them there. Two months later, the British attacked a rebel formation on Bunker Hill, finally forcing the militia to retreat, although not before the British took more heavy losses. The Continental Congress realized it had a war on its hands and appointed the tall, red-headed soldier from Virginia, George Washington, as general in chief. He accepted the appointment, well knowing he would be hung as a traitor if he were captured. Every signer of the Declaration of Independence knew the same thing. If the British captured him, he would be hung. In fact, every person in America knew that if the Revolution failed, the British would hang every prominent rebel they could catch. Despite this reality, or perhaps an acknowledgment of it, the final sentence of the Declaration of Independent States. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. John Hancock was the first man who signed the Declaration. He said, "I will sign my name so large the king can read it without his glasses." And he did. As the other delegates signed, Benjamin Franklin gave a sober warning. "Gentlemen, we must all hang together, or assuredly we shall all hang separately." Would you sign a pledge to support your fellow citizens with your life and your honor? Then do it. Amazingly, every soldier, sailor, and airman who has enlisted in the armed forces of the United States in the past, right up to today, does just that. They put their life and their honor on the line for the benefit of you and me. Patriotism is faith and courage, with the willingness to act, to stand up, and to be counted. You know the rest. George Washington forced the British army to evacuate Boston and was himself forced to flee New York when the British used large formations of regular troops against his poorly-trained volunteer militia. Yet, in the bitter winter of 1777, he devised a counterstroke. He led his half-starred freezing troops in a dangerous Christmas Eve crossing of the Delaware River, attacked the British at Trent, and in a brilliant lightning campaign ran the British out of New Jersey and saved the Revolution. It was Washington's strategy that led to the capture of British armies at Saratoga in 1777 and Yorktown in 1781, effectively ending the Revolution. With the war won, the colonies were flat-broke. The national government was saddled with debts it had no way to pay. The government couldn't even pay its soldiers. Politicians argued endlessly, yet none of the young country's problems were effectively addressed. It seemed as if the lives and treasure the Revolution had caused had been wasted. In this atmosphere of acrimony, self-interest, incompetence, and confusion, some of Washington's officers and friends urged him to do the only sensible thing. "Clear yourself a dictator," they said, "and use the army to take over the government." This was precisely the course chosen by Napoleon a few years later, when he crowned himself emperor of France. But George Washington refused. He was having none of it. He said that it was up to the people's representatives to solve the problems facing the new nation. He resigned his commission as a general and went home. Can you imagine it? Power, fame, the siren call to be the savior of your nation. And George Washington said, "No. Our elected representatives must work out the solutions that we can live with." This affirmation of faith and the ability of a free people to solve their own problem is, in my mind, one of the greatest acts of patriotism in American history. Think how different our history would have been if Washington had taken it upon himself to be the American Messiah. He could have done it, you know. He was hailed even then as the father of his country, the leader who had struck off British chains. The soldiers would have followed him. Yet he went home to Mount Vernon on the Potomac and once again became a farmer. Four years later, after dark dismal days and much political turmoil, the Virginia legislature selected Washington as one of its delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, where he was elected chairman. Listening carefully, saying little, he presided as the delegate who debated on how a new government should be constructed and watched as they wrote the United States Constitution. After ratification, Washington was unanimously chosen by the electors of the 13 states to be our first president. Faith in the political process, faith in your fellow Americans, those qualities are the beating heart of patriotism. Every soldier who wears a uniform and risks his or her life for their country, every citizen who participates in the political process to make their country better, every person who considers it a duty to go to the polls on election day and vote his or her conscience, every person who writes a letter to the editor, every person who pays their taxes, every person who writes a letter to their congressman and demands action, every person who honors soldiers and sailors who die to keep this nation free, they are the patriots. Like the Minutemen and George Washington, and those brave souls who signed the Declaration of Independence, knowing it might be their death warrant, the American soldiers who fought at Gettysburg and Shiloh in the wilderness, and the Americans who waited ashore on the beaches of Normandy and Iwo Jima and fought in all the other grimy little places where men died hard, these patriots have in common a deep, abiding faith in their fellow Americans. Some call patriotism love of country, yet it's not dirt patriots love, it's people. They thrill when the flag goes by and the national anthem is played. They participate in the political process because they know in the depth of their soul that their fellow Americans are trying to do the right thing, and eventually will, when they figure out what it is. Freeing the slaves, fighting poverty and racism, defending freedom here and around the world, leveling the playing field for everyone, giving people the freedom to be whatever their talents and ambitions will allow, the freedom to go wherever their dreams take them, Americans have been at it for many generations. Patriots believe in America. This marvelous, wondrous place we call the United States is your heritage. It's a gift from all Americans who have gone before you. The flag, the history, the blood, tears, and dreams, all of it. Stephen Coons was born and raised in West Virginia. After graduation from Buchanan and Upsher High School, he attended West Virginia University and graduated in 1968 with an A.B. degree. He was commissioned as an officer in the U.S. Navy and went to flight school, where he earned his wings of gold. He flew A-6 intruders for two combat cruises aboard USS Enterprise as an officer in attack squadron 196 during the final years of the Vietnam War. Among his decorations is the Distinguished Flying Cross. After the war, he became a flight instructor on A-6 aircraft, then did a ship's company tour aboard USS Nimitz. After nine years of active duty, Mr. Coons returned to civilian life. He held several short jobs, including a stint as a police officer in Longmont, Colorado, before attending the University of Colorado School of Law. After graduation, he was admitted to practice law in West Virginia and Colorado. He retired from the Naval Reserve after 21 years of service with the rank of commander. Mr. Coons' first novel, Flight of the Intruder, was published in 1986 and spent over six months on the New York Times Bestseller List. The stunning success of that Vietnam flying story allowed him to devote himself full-time to writing. He has published 32 books so far, 16 of which have became New York Times bestsellers. He and his wife, Deborah Jean, reside in Colorado, where he continues to happily scribble on.
After Steve received this DVD, after we completed it, of course, all the words are Stephen's himself, but after he received the DVD, and he sent me this letter, I'd like to read it. "Dear Bob, thank you for the DVD of The American Patriot, which the American Legion Frank B. Bartlett VII created for my short essay on patriotism, the essay that you asked me to write. I thought you and your fellow legionnaires did an excellent job. Mr. Shreve did a good job of narration and painting that illustration. The works were well chosen, and apropos, all in all, I think the production captured the spirit of patriotism that I wrote about. To my mind, faith in the democratic process and the inherent goodness of one's fellow Americans are the essence of patriotism. We are all in this together. We shall sink or swim as a nation together. Our nation has many problems, as it has always had, but together as a people united, we are grappling with those problems and trying our best to do the right thing, as God gives us the light to see what that might be. Give my regards and best wishes to your fellow legionnaires and to all involved in creating the DVD, like you. I hope this DVD will be shown to all the children in the West Virginia school system for many years to come and have a positive and beneficial impact." Say one more thing. You may be asking for yourself why the American Legion believes it's necessary to get a class on patriotism in our school curriculum. We all have the opportunity to see our political system going downhill. This has nothing to do with one political party, but with both. It's a feeling of the American Legion that to help correct our problems over a long period of time, it has to come from our youth. We must somehow get our politicians, who are elected in the future, to see as their number-one priority patriotism, love of country, and Americanism, what America is all about. The only way to accomplish this, in our opinion, is to teach patriotism in our school system. Patriotism is love of country. You can look at it this way: our country would not have survived all the wars and military conflicts if it had not been for our forefathers' love of country and patriotism.
Thank you, Bob. A few weeks ago, I requested and was granted a meeting with Michael and Jerry, and CJ was there also, as to what we could do in order to improve the look for the visibility of Buchanan. We were all quite disappointed. What prompted this was the Fourth of July. There was nothing in this city, other than some flags that Mary put in the flower boxes on Main Street relative to the Fourth of July or anything that was done. We understand why. We also, we thought if we could get the city to accept the responsibility to maintain the flags, that we would furnish the American flags for the 23 or 24 lampposts. And Michael and Jerry committed to that, putting the flags up, which we're gratefully appreciative of. The flags are flying, and we have one flag left here that, Bob, if you and Peggy would please go up and present this flag to the Honorable Kenny Davidson.
On behalf of Frank B. Bartlett, post number seven, in the American Legion, we present this flag to you, and we thank you for flying the flags there where you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is, I'm also a veteran.
I know you are.
And a member of the American Legion, and this is a very special occasion, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
In closing, just a few more words to sum up Americanism. As Bob says, it's an unfeeling love of country, the loyalty to its institutions and ideals, and its eagerness to defend against all enemies, an individual allegiance to the flag, and a desire to serve the blessings of liberty to ourselves and posterity. In our continuing efforts to further advance the Americanism and the visibility of the American flag, the flags were donated by the American Legion and the Legion Auxiliary. The city has accepted the responsibility to provide the manpower to put the flags up and take them down. We requested from the county commission this morning that they maintain those flags and budget money in order for replacement as they become necessary. budget money in order for replacement as they become necessary. They were receptive to that, but I don't know how it will turn out. The other thing, as veterans, we're continuously being thanked for our service, and I'll be the first to admit that it gives me a warm, fuzzy feeling. I spent 20 years with the Air Force. But there are many types of service. Just look around. Some of you youngsters may go in the military, you may not. The military gets thanked over and over and over again, but our elected officials, our local officials, the police, firemen, the religious institutions, these are all service activities. The list goes on and on. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for your service and your continued service to our city and our government, and God bless America.
We're not done. We'll be done real quick. Mayor, you want to present those proclamations?
Sure do.
Okay. Part of my job at the American Legion is, as Post Adjutant, working with Bob, Post on the Americanism Committee, is to make sure we get our proclamations. These things are important because it's our job as veterans to remind the people within the community that there are special days out there, like 9/11. There are special days out there, like American Legion Day. And there are special days out there, or holidays out there, like POW/MIA Day. How many in here can tell me what POW/MIA means? POW/MIA, Prisoners of War, Missing in Action. And there are three separate proclamations, and the mayor doesn't have to read them all, but I think as a group, Les and Bob, that we can receive these from them. Okay? Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. This proclamation, the day to remember, I'm going to read, because I think they're worthy of being read.
Thank you.
Whereas the unprovoked attacks of September 11, 2001, upon America by foreign terrorists have thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned, militarily or diplomatically. And whereas the challenges facing all the civilized people of the world as they relate to the war on terrorism will not end until those fanatics responsible are eliminated or brought to justice. And whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever. And whereas world opinion needs to remain focused on the eradication of these inhumane acts perpetrated around the world. And whereas one way to accomplish this is to never forget that those innocent victims did not die in vain. And whereas America can fight back by reminding the world that the deaths of these people will always be remembered and that they will be forever loved. And whereas a noble and appropriate way to accomplish this is through the annual celebration of their living. And whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11 throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of America's resolve and perseverance to win the war on terrorism, the advancement of responsible citizenship, the encouragement of patriotism and love of country, and the poignant remembrance of those innocent victims who died September 11 as heroes, one and all. Now therefore be it resolved, as the mayor of City of Buchanan, West Virginia, I am wishing this proclamation to moralize these men, women, and children who lost their lives, and be it further resolved that this proclamation be publicized for all to see and know that the citizens of Buchanan remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly without cause and pointedly taken from them on September 11, 2001. May they forever rest in peace and abide in our memories. Respectfully submitted and approved this 29th day of August, 2013. Sign that ahead. And then, a community proclamation, American Legion Day. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16 as a wartime Veterans Organization, based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization, which now numbers more than 2.5 million members, men and women, and over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, the youth of America, and its citizens. And whereas the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas the 2013 observance of American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize Legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to our community, now therefore, I, Kenneth T. Davidson, Mayor of City of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim September 16, 2013, as American Legion Day, Frank B. Bartlett, Post Number Seven, Buchanan, West Virginia, and witness whereof I have set my hand. And then, you know, there's a, you see it on the news a lot of times, where we have those prisoners of war, we don't have a lot of that, but we still have from Vietnam and other places, Missing in Action, the MIA. So we will recognize. For years, the American Legion supported a National POW/MIA Recognition Day, which is now recognized annually on the third Friday of September. This commemoration is set aside to honor the commitment and sacrifices made by this nation's prisoners of war and those who are still missing in action, as well as their families. Until July 18, 1979, no commemoration was held to honor POW/MIA's. In the first year, Congress passed resolutions, and the national ceremonies held at the National Cathedral in Washington. The first tactical squadron from Langley Air Force Base in Virginia flew the missing man formation. The poster was published by VA, which contained only letters, POW/MIA. That continued until 1982, when a black-and-white drawing of a POW in captivity was used to show urgency of the situation. Every year, National POW/MIA Recognition Day legislation was introduced until 1985, when Congress determined that commemorative days would no longer be considered. The president now signs a proclamation each year. The National League of Families proposed the third Friday of September as a commemoration date. Most of the National POW/MIA Recognition Day ceremonies have taken place at the Pentagon. Now they're held throughout the nation and around the world on military installations, ships, schools, churches, and city halls. The focus is to ensure that America remembers its responsibility to stand behind those who serve it and to make sure that we do all that is possible to account for those who have not returned. And that's I, Kenneth T. Davidson, again, present that to them.
It's one and only, Kenneth T. Davidson.
Go up here and give a photo of him.
Thank you.
Come on. I was taught that we do these proclamations, one of the reasons we do proclamations is to give these organizations a chance to promote what they're doing. Well, let's spread these out here a little bit. Spread these out here a little bit.
Where are we looking at? Oh, oh.
She can start.
She can start.
All right, everybody, ready?
Cheese.
Cheese. One more. And one more. Good measure.
Get right here, please.
Don't start.
Hold up, hold up. Yeah, right here on three, please. One, two, three. Again, on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, one, two, three.
Mayor? Thank you.
Now, the mayor will be on TV making fun of us.
Let's go cut it off, we'll get up late.
Tom O'Neill has asked for the floor.
I just wanted to say to Frank B. Bartlett, Post Seven, thank you. My uncle, my mom's youngest brother was a U.S. Navy officer on duty in the Pentagon in the morning of September 11, and he lost his life that day. And we named our, we named our first son after him. Sorry. And we had the opportunity to take, my son is great, he's buried at Arlington last week. And because he's getting to be an age where we can start to explain things, I just wanted to say thanks for that memorial.
Thank you. That's all we have.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Usually we say, you know, you're totally welcome to stay, but if you've got to move, I understand.
I'd say that Frank B. Bartlett, Post Seven, also sponsors Forensic Monday Nights all the different times throughout, throughout the year, where the youth of Buchanan, and not only the youth, but there are some youth that are in their 60s that are attending this. But the youth and college students are all welcome. Our next one is this Monday night at 6 o'clock at the American Legion Hall, and this particular session's going to be on teen suicide and prevention, and will be hosted by Dr. Greenberg Allen. We cover various topics throughout the year, and welcome everybody that wants to come. They're free. We usually provide a little bit of food for you to eat too while you're there. So I just wanted to throw that in and thank Post Seven for continuing to support that.
Thank you. Hope that everybody here, particularly students, are impressed with these folks. You know, Les Reeves was on active duty for 20 years, and certainly saw his share of military action. And you tell that Les Reeves and Bob Post are passionate about their love for this country. And I hope that, that at least some of you have been positively affected by this experience you see, and that you'll join the rest of you in your love for this country. We have, Melissa Mills has signed up to speak. It's your turn, Melissa. Elissa. I even looked at it.
Melissa, whatever. Doesn't matter.
Who's husband is her? Alicia. Alicia, I'll say it right.
My husband's in the guard, yeah. And I don't know, Mr. O'Neill, if you know it or not, but Colonel Muth, who is the current US PFO, was working in the Pentagon on 9/11. And he's got, he's, he went through a rather traumatic experience that day, so, yeah. That day affected everybody, some, your family, for example, a lot more strongly than others. The reason I'm here, we're Park Street, and you're just down from us, Kenny. Our street's always been close. It's always been kind of like family. Most of us that live there, a lot of us that have lived there, have lived there for years. And we like our neighborhood. We love our neighbors. Almost everybody gets along. I mean, we don't, you don't have fights on Park Street, I don't think. You've never had, you know, we get along. Since Judge Caddell moved, and it didn't dawn on me till I was doing the tour of the annex over Weston. And I was in the judge's chambers, and I, we started talking, and it dawned on me, this is when it happened. It was right about the time Tom moved, that we started having this problem. And evidently, once he moved, these kids started thinking it was okay to start doing this. We have had a significant, and I'm sure that the police could give me a percentage, but we're having a serious problem at the city park after dark. And it's not just what we think is a problem. We're seeing it. There's five or six of us who have kind of, it's become a hump. We are actually sitting, watching transactions take place. And we, we know the cars that we're seeing, we know the people we're seeing, and we know how, how they're doing the transactions. And this evening over dinner, I was talking to somebody, and I said some, something about I was headed over here, and they said, "Well, you live down on Park Street." And I said, "Yeah." They said, "Well, you know that since they took, that since the neighbors down there have been kind of calling the police, that they, they're kind of not going down to the front so much now. Now, since the fence is down, they're going up in the back, and they're dropping the stuff off up back there. So you might want to make note of that." We've got a couple neighbors that are choosing to ignore what's going on within their own homes. And the one neighbor, I love her dearly, but evidently she doesn't realize what's going on under her own roof. Well, that could actually apply to. But we've got, one night, Robin and I thought we were going to be shot, literally, because the truck pulled up, one of my trees was blocking it, we had no place to go. We were actually sitting there talking, didn't notice the truck, and all of a sudden, I'm thinking, she said, "Alyssa, there's..." And I said, "Yeah, I see it." She said, "What are we going to do?" I said, "I don't know, just sit here and pretend like we don't see it." Because it was there, and we didn't know where to go. We didn't know, were they watching us? What were they doing? Turned out, they were going between a vacant house, they were going someplace they had no reason to be going there. And we've called, and of course, the police always come when they're called, but the thing is, we need some help down there. One of the things we need, there's a great big light that's been out, it's probably about the size of one of these units, that's right there, about where the American flag goes in the park, and it's been burnt out for several months. Now, I understand, I think that there's been a request put into Mon Power, maybe, to get that thing fixed, and there seems to be a problem. Does anybody know?
I've actually reported that light has been turned in twice, and I also called Dave Cannon and up the message for him.
Who's Dave Cannon?
He is the engineer from Mon Power. Requested that that be put on as a priority, get that light fixed, but I haven't gotten that response.
Okay, I have a question. Who could we go to to tire them out? Kenny, who could we go to?
We'll, we'll find out.
Okay, because that would be one thing that would help a whole lot. The other thing is, we, Steve Beer has moved back on Park Street, down at 27th. He retired as of last Friday. He told me that he's living down there, but see, the rulos aren't well at all. And I mean, there are people, it's getting kind of scary down there. I won't lie to you. Robin, what can you share? I mean, you've seen it.
You've seen it all.
We know the faces, we know the cars.
Got license numbers?
Some, and that's another thing. We've got, my husband's one of them, that's willing to work either with the city or to provide the city, if need be, because that's another thing we've been having trouble with. You know that the car's been broken into, her house has been, they've tried breaking into it a couple times, and then last Friday night, the neighbor next door to us caught two of them prowling around behind her house. We've all put up extra sensor lights, we've put up cameras, including with infrared technology. Terry is willing to work with anyone, including the police, if they want to put up cameras on our private properties to also get license numbers and cars. Whatever we can do, we're willing to do to put a stop to this. Because we love our neighborhood, and we'd like it to stay safe for the kids, and the pets, and the older people, which we are now quickly becoming.
We'll check.
Stop laughing, Robin, it's not funny. And we'd like to continue to become older.
We'll, we'll check on that light, and I'm sure Doug will pass this along to Matt, and we'll see what, what we can do.
But in the meantime, since you're closer to the back park, you might want to be watching.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
This isn't just a problem on Park Street, as you, as we've talked before about it too, but it's a problem in every neighborhood in Buchanan. My neighborhood, I've got five houses within, within two blocks that can probably name where they're selling stuff and making stuff, and it's all, and it's all over. But we really need citizens to contact the police. Don't be afraid to call them, especially if you see something that's happening right then. Call and let an officer respond, or give them the history, get down license numbers, descriptions, whatever you can. Because if you don't talk to the officers, they're not going to know what's going on out there in your neighborhood. And we want... And, and we want to keep it safe, I want my grandchildren to be able to play in my neighborhood in the streets, and I do not want people selling meth and heroin and, and everything like that around the neighborhood.
Yeah, but Ron.
And I will not tolerate it in my neighborhood.
But Ron, here's the problem. Even if the police came, the transactions we're seeing, even if they came in the split second that we called, the way it's being done, it's not that simple.
Yes, well, uh, there, there can be something done, and we've got to do it.
And that's why I'm saying we're willing to work, you know.
We have to do it, you have to do it, Doug and the department heads, we all have to work together. There's fifty-seven hundred people in Buchanan.
Mm-hmm.
We need to do this.
Well, those of us down our way are willing.
To get rid of the two or three hundred of them that are actually out there destroying our city.
Well, those of us down our way are willing to do our part.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay. Department Board reports.
Michael. Council should have the, uh, financial report ending August 31st, 2013. Hard to believe that we're starting in our final month of our first quarter of our fiscal year. Uh, do want to point out, uh, a couple items of interest. First of all, our overall revenue collection, um, to this point is $574,326.19. However, our expenditures are $711,000, $789.50, which is actually a negative difference of $137,463.31 expenditures over revenues. Uh, it's not actually uncommon at this point of the fiscal year, early on, for our expenditures to be a little bit more than the revenue that we're taking in. Uh, we're deep still in project season, um, that explains a, a significant portion of the expenditures. Uh, we did have pre-pays in August, and believe it or not, having pre-pays in August, um, actually does, does hurt, uh, and does affect those numbers. Uh, we did pay off a fire truck portion as well, so all of that contributes to, to that, that negative deficit. Um, good, good news, uh, this month, we start receiving a, a pretty good chunk of our abnormal property tax, and, uh, next month, we'll be getting our quarterly BNOs, so I anticipate that those numbers will be back up, uh, in the positive. Um, as always, if you'd like a full detailed report of, of the financials, um, you can see me after, after, uh, after council, or stop by the office, you give me a call, I'll be happy to put those in the box. Um, under old business tonight, I have a few items. Uh, the first one is City Park playground equipment. As you all know, um, we did remove some playground equipment, um, at council's request, uh, for some playground equipment in City Park that was in bad shape, uh, that remains vacant. We have had, um, meetings and, and went down there and looked at possible playground equipment. Uh, just recently, it was revealed to us in the office that there's an actual grant opportunity that would fund approximately half the cost of playground equipment. Um, this is pretty significant, uh, some of the cost estimates we were getting early on for just the playground equipment alone was around $80,000. Um, this, this, with this grant, we're able to apply for this grant, uh, again, half of that cost would purchase playground equipment, and some of the playground equipment we're looking at that's applicable to the grant would actually only cost the city of Buchanan about $25,000. Um, this playground equipment also includes handicapped accessibility and availability. Um, and I guess at this time, to move quickly on this grant, because there's really only about a million dollars, um, of, of grant opportunities, I'd ask council if, if they could provide authorization for us to apply for the grant and, uh, purchase the playground equipment, uh, in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Again, uh, basing this off of the playground equipment we've looked at at other places, uh, in this grant opportunity, it could save the city of Buchanan $10,000 to $20,000 in the long run, if not maybe more, and, uh, it does help us achieve that goal of, of getting playground equipment back in City Park.
So your, so your request is that we authorize the expenditure to be reimbursed through a grant, or?
No, actually, we would contribute.
Authorize the grant application?
The grant application, and in turn, if we are successful with the grant application, it would, it would have that, uh, not, again, not to exceed $25,000.
I see.
I'd like to make admission.
Oh, you're going to go. Okay. Much made and seconded. Further discussion or question?
How long, uh, will it take to get an answer on the grant application?
Um, probably within a week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this seems to be a fast track to something or other, and, uh, Michael's done a lot of work on it, he's done a lot of checking into it, and the people who are offering it, there are two, three different places that do it, they have a GSA number, contract number. GSA contract number, and, uh, they're legitimate, and, uh, and we, we, we want to proceed with it. So I'll call, question, all in favor, signify, so we can say hi.
Hi.
Post no, eyes have it. Michael, you had your walking orders there.
Thank you, thank you. Um, next item under old business is the conference center update, and I know Mr. McCauley will have some, some items under his presentation as well as, as Jay Holland, but I just wanted to, to let you know that, um, Jay Holland and myself attended a, a meeting, uh, earlier this week, uh, with members of the, uh, Upsher County CBB and also members of the Development Authority, uh, to discuss the progress of the, uh, conference center. Uh, we're working on an inter-local agreement, and ultimately, a management agreement. I think Mr. McCauley's presenting the inter-local, uh, intergovernmental agreement tonight, um, as a draft. Uh, I do want to make a note that there's, there's what, what, what the Guard is calling essentially a conference center management committee. Um, that's comprised of a representative from the city, a representative from the CBB, a representative from the Upsher County, um, Development Authority, as well as representatives from the Guard. Uh, this committee is really the, again, the management committee, that the brain trust of the operations of the Guard as it relates to our interest in the conference center. Uh, this committee will set up all of the, the necessary operational costs, um, including utilities, custodial work that would be done there, um, in hosting some of these banquets. So, um, they're recommending that we, we meet as a committee so we can start hashing that out. It's important for the CBB in, in, in taking reservations, uh, in coordinating activities to fill the conference center, to have, um, this committee meet, uh, and hash out those, those details, if you will. So, I'm going to request from council a consideration to select an individual to serve on this conference center management committee on behalf of the council and the city of Buchanan.
You and?
I think it's obvious choice, is Michael Doss. So I'll, I'll appoint Michael Doss as the city's representative. An objection? Hearing none?
His wife's not here.
So, Michael, you, uh, and no surprise to you, we, we've talked about this, but Michael is the obvious choice.
Next item under old business, and I thank you for the appointment, uh, is the Home Rule application update. I'm actually starting to author the Home Rule application, just literally filling in the contact information, so it's not really glamorous, but I hope to be diving into that, uh, over the next several weeks. Um, we want to put forth an excellent application, I believe there's probably going to be an article in the Record Delta tomorrow.
Next week.
Next week on this. So everyone, um, out, out in the city can, can take a look at that article, and maybe that'll help explain a little bit, um, why we're pursuing the Home Rule application. Uh, but I just wanted to let council know we're working on that. We want to put a, a comprehensive application together that really will set Buchanan apart. Um, I know, in my experiences and in dealing with other council members and other city employees, we ran into instances, uh, just in my short tenure, of, of times when, um, there's things that we cannot do exclusive to Buchanan, because, um, the state legislature, unfortunately or unfortunately, doesn't address something. And the things that they don't address, we as a city are not allowed to, to, to enact. So it really gives us kind of the flexibility to chart our own course here in Buchanan and, and, and separate us from that rigidity that combines us with places like Martinsburg and other places, which are, which have their own different needs. So we're working on that application. I'm hoping to have a rough draft of that application to present to council by mid-October. Um, hopefully, maybe engage council members and their thoughts, um, before I get that draft to you. Again, it's a draft far from completion, um, but we're trying to look at things, again, that, that, in areas of economic development, property maintenance, and some general administrative things, that we can provide much more efficient and effective services to our citizens utilizing Home Rule. So, it's a little update on our Home Rule application.
Mike, and those are, that's due next spring at some point?
It's actually, what, we, we attended a municipal league conference, and these gentlemen can attest to this, uh, they're actually starting to accept applications January 1st, they moved it up. You're not going to get any points, they're saying, getting it in early, but the final deadline is by the end of June, I believe, for the effective.
They may say that, but I think you get them in before the end rush, and you'll probably get a little bit of attention for that.
Yeah, that's, it's kind of a goal.
We're really serious about it.
But, um, it, it's going to be a lot of work, uh, as a Home Rule committee, if we are, if we are accepted, um, this is basically, you have to provide a lot of data, show them what's working and how that's working, because ultimately, the legislature, after five years, will go back and revisit this to see if there's any validity to it, and either continue or discontinue the program, so.
Measurability is important.
Exactly. Um, under new business, I, I do want to mention, uh, we're looking, uh, we haven't done this for a couple years, but we're looking at doing another government, uh, city government surplus auction. Uh, we held that during my first year here, it was fairly successful, uh, but we do have a lot of surplus equipment and vehicles in our city inventory and fleet that, um, we'd like to, to get off our books. Uh, where I've talked to Megan Palmer, who is the county administrator, and we did partner with the county and Willie Parker a couple years ago, and I think that partnership worked out fairly well. We do have some items that we're housing for Upsher County, the Upsher County Commission. So I'm working with Megan. Uh, we're hoping, and, and I've solicited our department heads to provide a list of inventory of items that could be included in the auction. Uh, there'll be more to come on this, but, uh, we're hoping to have this auction later this fall. Um, and again, we'll be partnering with the Upsher County Commission, uh, in, in that endeavor. Again, very successful, I, I think we netted around fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, uh, two years ago on that. So, it's better to net some money than have it sitting, whittling away.
Rusting.
Exactly. So, again, that's my presentation, and if anyone has any questions, happy to.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Michael. Uh, Jay Holland, city engineer.
Oh, Michael. Uh, good evening. Uh, I'll try to make this brief, as I always try to do, because somehow I always go on a little long-winded. If you all have any questions on some of these projects, please stop me. The first two I'm going to talk about will be coming off the books soon, we hope to be completing those within the next two weeks. The first being the water line installation at the Army Guard site. The, uh, 4,300 feet of 12-inch water line has been completed, and about 72% of the 6-inch water line is going to be, is completed. We anticipate that completion being done next week, and as, that, that'll wrap it up. We'll have about a week of testing the 6-inch line and, uh, 25% of the 12-inch line, some seeding and mulching miscellaneous cleanup, but for all intents and purposes, the, uh, water line installation is complete. North Ridge Development, as it reported in August, the water tap, we made two water taps of the 12-inch main to the North Ridge Development Site, those were completed. In the meantime, we see, received, um, approval from the Bureau for Public Health for both the installation of the water line and the sanitary sewer line to that development. And speaking with Sam Ludlow today, just so I can give you all a brief update, he is 85% complete with the sanitary sewer installation, and has about 30 to 60 feet left, and, uh, hopes to wrap it up within the next two weeks.
Beating through rock.
Yeah, he always gets to rock. He has to be deep, I, I can stay shallow. Uh, Gateway East Enhancement Project, as you can see from the barrels and the yellow cones and some traffic congestion on Tuesday, we, we started that project, but I must confess, I must say that since it's right outside the office window, I've been able to keep tabs on it, and, and only because it is running so much smoother these past few days. Tuesday, we had our little hiccups until we got the traffic patterns down and developing, and where's the best place to locate the flagman, but I can really say that these last two days have, have gone, you know, there are some hiccups, small ones, but much more smooth. Um, the DOH, I presented this a couple months ago, where I'd asked for some increased funds due to material costs going up. Uh, the DOH kind of let that supplemental agreement go to the bottom of the pile, I mentioned that in a phone conversation earlier this week, and it's now been brought to the, brought to the front of the pile. Uh, they're going to execute that and send that to us within the next week, and that was for the additional funds to complete that. Also reported last time on the electrical material supplies, Scott Electric was the low bid, their base bid was just over $10,800, and I had it in there, the wiring for the north side, which we hope to start this year and, but complete next year. Both the way copper parts is fluctuating and all that, and I looked at my budget, and I had the money, I went ahead and bought the, uh, north side wiring and conduit, so the total electrical material was $19,000. That does not include the streetlights or, or lamps. Um, what we're going to do, and Jerry, you can interrupt me if, if you feel it's necessary, we're going to, the, the way the sequence is going is, we're putting in the sidewalks, the electrical conduit, and the foundations for the light poles as we're going down the street, and then we can come back, we can pull the electrical wiring and install the street lamps, you know, as time permits. We're trying to get as much done of the excavation and installation of the concrete while the weather's good, and we can go back and put light poles and wiring up at any time. Anticipate working on both sides, uh, both the north and south sides of the project up until the winter months arrive, you know, hoping around December the 1st, at which time we'll, we'll pull off and ask for a winter shutdown from the DOHs. This one I, I briefly touched on last month, but it was the SuttonLink Fiber Optic Upgrade Project. What SuttonLink is wanting to do is upgrade their fiber optics, because Buchanan is a terminal point for all points east of us, Randolph County, Elkins and everything, and if the, if the fiber optic goes down, then they're all, not only Upsher County, but Elkins and every, but east of us. So they're wanting to put in a redundant fiber optic, it's a combination overhead and underground. I met with them, uh, because they had proposed a site that's adjacent to the Hebner Grove portion of the cemetery that the city of Buchanan owns, and they were wanting to go 10 to 20 feet off the property line and install some above-ground poles. But in speaking with Mr. Clemmons and doing a little bit of research, that, uh, it's discovered that that piece of property that they want to go through contains plus or minus 2,000 grave sites from the people that were interred, you know, at the, uh, Old Baptist Church, when the Quarter H Project went through years and years ago, those people were re-interred on that piece of property. And I said, "In no way will we allow you to go through there, nor we will grant you a right of way." So wanting to work with them and, and being the good neighbors, Mike just can't believe, because he's not having any luck with this project, Mike, Mike Guthrie being the SuttonLink representative. I told him to contact the DOHs, they may have some maps, because the DOH at that time had to pay for the, the reinterment. Rich and I will look for some information that we can to see if we can provide them, because they just want to go up the edge of the property, property, but there may be grave sites there, we do not know. So, they're working on that, and, you know, I'll report if anything new pops up. Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. Next week, we will be interviewing, on Thursday, we'll be re-interviewing three firms to, uh, look at our water treatment plant for some upgrades and possible renovations. The three firms are Burgess and Nykel, Chapman Technical Group and Patesta. And the main focus for this portion of the project is some structural renovations and repair to the settlement bases and some pipe gallery, uh, upgrades, which include new gate valves, butterfly valves, and control, which, control or filter beds. We need to do those, but that's next Thursday, um, if you're interested. Finally, uh, the McDonald Route 20 lane widening. I do have a confirmation on the PFR, that's Preliminary Field Review Meeting, but the DOH will be coming up from Charleston, a meeting with Sam and I. Uh, that'll be, it's been scheduled, it's been pushed back a month for September 23rd, 2013. Uh, it was reported late August, it's late August, we haven't had it, so that'll be in about three weeks, they're going to come up. And in regards to the historical structure located at East Victoria Street, there has been correspondence between the property owners and the DOHs themselves regarding the shrubs and the current alignment where the sidewalks and, uh, staging lane will go, and they're working to resolve that prior to our meeting, so hopefully, by the time the PFR comes, the DOH will have a direction to go, and at that particular end of the project, and everything will be smoothed out. So if anybody has any questions, I'll answer it.
It's been busy, hasn't it?
It's been a busy week. It's been a busy week, and that's it.
Any questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay. Jerry?
Good morning. Consolidated Public Works Board report. Consolidated Public Works Board met on Thursday the 22nd, and a guest, Charlie Cox, was there to, um, present and request info on the status of ownership and maintenance on access to his home. Jay reported that, uh, Dave and others are researching that information. I'll report back. Uh, we, I sent a letter out regarding the monument in the cemetery, and then there's, uh, which has been referred to Dave for his opinion. Also, we had a request from the Moose Watch to provide another handicap space on street. That was denied due to the limited parking, we've had issues down there. Close one, it's tried to reassign parks down there anyway, but, uh, limited parking and the ability, but they haven't had that space in there a lot, and that request was denied. I had a letter sent to, uh, West Virginia DOH Traffic Engineering, and that letter was just, um, reaffirming what we had asked for, for Main Street. what we had asked for, for Main Street, and one of the things was they wanted a file copy of the, they gave us a verbal, paint the poles downtown, and they wanted a file copy, a hard copy for their files for that. So I went ahead and hit on all the points we'd like to see happen on Main Street. And again, they're still working on that. Matter of fact, I talked with Tyler Campbell with the sign guy here, a little boy, just yesterday, about changing that stop sign, or they'd like for us to assume the responsibilities for those stop signs. So it's happening, it's coming to pass. They're going to do the traffic count again on the dirt light this fall, and again, they're doing, trying to do that same time they did it before last fall. So that's what that letter was about. Approved a request from Craig Buchanan to place the low free libraries in all the city parks. Also, there was a request from George Herstager for a crop under walk and the use of jawbone park or a, or an overnight type event, and it approved, the Public Works Board approved the crop walk, but the motion failed for lack of a second for the overnight activities of jawbone. Also, had a request from Jim Abel to lease all of Lot 6 at a reduced rate, and that request was denied. However, he, the board said he can preserve as many spaces as he would like at the current rate.
Which one's Lot 6?
That's the old farmer's block, Lot 6. And that was pretty much it. Consolidated Board, Waste Board met this evening, and along with new business, we've had the, still working with the property trade that Lot 4 products. Waste Board approved the purchase of a pallet wrapper, an eight-hour electronic recycling program, and approved that purchase, which, I believe I'll have a bid going, I believe it's about sixty-seven, seven-six, I think I'm correct. Also, approved the increase in fees for cathode grade televisions in our electronic program starting October first, and the reason for that being is we are charged on a percentage basis of a load that we ship out for electronics, and if we exceed fifteen percent of that load, the price goes from ten cents per pound to fifteen cents per pound. And the landfill we haul to, as well as other service providers in the area, have been, the landfill sent me a price sheet, and they're charging for everything except for cellphones, and they are charging twenty-five dollars for a cathode grade television. One of the other service providers in the area is charging thirty dollars, and then what they're doing is bringing those televisions up to us for five dollars and making a pretty good profit on the other service provider, the landfill. So.
Don't take them.
I don't option.
And charging more money?
But.
That's the point.
Right, that's why the price goes had to go up, for twenty reasons. The other was that, of course, we weren't making what we were being charged to dispose of on the five dollars a dollar. Also, approved the hiring of a full-time employee, so we have an add-on, maybe sort of a full-time voice board. And our transfer station report, and I apologize, I was trying to get some things up before the meeting, so I didn't have time to, time to get all this written down, so I just brought the agenda with me. The transfer station totals, we had one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one transactions and a total weight of one thousand four hundred and twelve tons. And for recycling, for the month of August, we did forty point three tons. Street Department report, Jay does cover quite a bit of it for me, so thanks for looking out your window. However, we did have a couple of weeks between projects that we were able to go out and catch up on all of our utility cuts. We got most of the puddles, there are some still out there, and I hope to be able to have a day or two that we can still go back out and catch up with the rest of the puddles before winter. Again, Rob mentioned, I told him we'd put some signs up for Randy Day, he brought the signs, and we haven't had a Randy Day yet, so I hope he brings some more signs in.
I'll just wait for them. Fall, whatever.
But as Jay said, we got off to a good start on these Main Streets, and as this section, this is probably the most difficult section, and the reason we wanted to tackle it first was the availability of blacktop. If we wait till later on the season, we're not sure when the blacktop plants will close, so we wanted to get this section in, just to take care of that concrete we can get throughout the winter months if we needed. So that's why we wanted to start on this end, and again, apologize to the folks that are affected over here, but it will be a very nice improvement once it is completed.
As far as the traffic jam, nobody knew the railroad was going to do their part out there on twenty.
Right.
At the same day that y'all were doing that. So all the traffic that I, and I was stuck twenty cars behind coming across the island and back that way, so everybody was coming right up your intersection up here.
And I appreciate a normal day in. But with that, like I said, you will see a marked increase in activity once we get past this point, and from there to the retaining walls, that portion will go rather quickly. And it's all happening unless there's a question.
Questions for Jerry?
I have a question about recycling. I've had a couple of people ask me in the last month or so, and I've forgotten to talk to you about it, but what is the reason that we don't recycle glass?
Glass. We, and I'll just go back to a little history, several years ago on, we actually marketed glass the same as we do any other commodity, and we would ship, we actually did all three colors of glass. We shipped that glass mainly into Ohio, and I'm thinking around the Zaneville area. The contamination, the amount of contamination in our glass program got such, so stringent, that the last time we took a load to this plant, they rejected the load, there was about six pieces of dinnerware, it was china-type stuff, and a forty thousand pound load of glass, which were these huge ailer boxes, and they rejected the load because of that. And of course, glass was never a commodity that you could make anything on or do anything with. I mean, it was, you barely broke even at the time, and you have a huge amount of risk associated with the handling and processing of glass when it comes into the facility. So after that point, Waste Board elected no longer to ship glass to market because of that. At the time, Ellenboro was still making marbles, so we were able to shift into taking just clear glass at that time. And with the clear glass, it worked out very well for us, because what we would do is we would bring that glass in and store it into one of the bins that we use on our roll over hooker truck, and actually transport that straight to Ellenboro ourselves. So you eliminated a lot of the issues involved with the processing and handling of the glass, and we were still able to offer that service, and it was still a kind of a break-even type thing with Ellenboro, although they closed the marble factory down at Ellenboro. So long story short, right now, in order to move glass, one, it has to be extremely clean, which we're not able to achieve the levels that they require, and two, we're going to be paying to get rid of. So that's why we no longer take glass. Sorry about the long answer.
I'm sorry.
Not as short as I can. Notice in the.
Cost and contamination.
Noticed article in the State Journal a few weeks ago, that Morgantown was going to stop taking glass.
Early?
For the same reason, same cost too much, it's about, cheaper to put it on landfill. Anybody else have a question for Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. A number of things to just quickly update you with. Most of my comments will come under your new business with the electrical inspection ordinance. You have in your packet tonight a document which has, well, at least in its first draft form, was prepared by Scott Barnett, General Counsel for the West Virginia Military. This concerns, again, the Armory Project, just when you think that we've done every document that's imaginable, there's another one that seems to crop up. In fact, this really sets the table for what I think will prove to be the last agreement that will be executed between the National Guard and the city, which is the Joint Use Agreement, which you certainly want to have in place before you start having functions out there in late fall of 2014. I'm not going to read this agreement, I'm just going to highlight it. It specifically references the lease agreement that was finalized back in April. It clarifies, this is one of these checklist things that the Guard needs to have for their file. It clarifies the monetary contributions of the city and the Uptown County CVB relative to the project. It establishes that there will be this joint enhancement space, which is really the conference center in the kitchen, out at the new Armory Facility. So it's not anything I'm looking for the council to approve tonight, but I would ask that Mr. Clemmons put this on his agenda for the September nineteenth meeting, in hopes that a couple of things happen by that point, that Mr. Barnett doesn't mind my having taken some great liberty by having amended, modified his original draft. And the other thing is, is there will be a board meeting of the Uptown County CVB to hopefully approve this thing. So by the time we come back at the nineteenth meeting, the council should be in a position. This matter should be mature for you to authorize Mayor Davidson to sign it on the city's behalf. Couple other things that we're working on, just a couple of three days ago, Mr. Doss provided me with a form that the county has contrived relative to the digital mapping coordinate sharing, and I'm looking at it right now. They've entered into a similar arrangement with the Adrian Fire Department, that they're now trying to get all of the fire departments to execute, and that should finally enable the county to release those important coordinate information, data pieces that we've been talking about for probably six months or so. Working on some rights and way matters, as Jay Holland alluded to, up at Mount Vista with development of the second water tank on the radar screen and some other issues relative to access to the top of the hill, we're looking at that. Mr. Doss has today asked me to look at the competitive bid statute relative to playground equipment, and as long as we keep our, the amount of the purchase under twenty-five thousand dollars, it's not necessary to bid that public bids, so that's good news. I'll tell you that we have some non-compliance in the cemetery. It's pretty bad at Buchanan, and even the dead folks know to follow our rules, right? The different, different parts of the cemetery have different rules and regulations, and one of the parts of the cemetery has a longstanding requirement that the bases that are put in for monuments or whatever is going in can't exceed forty-eight inches. Some folks built a base of forty-eight inches and then a bench, which was previously approved, presumptively not to exceed forty-eight inches, now exceeds forty-eight inches. So we're going to be working with not only the family folks who put the bench in, but also the entity that they contracted with to have the bench made, to see if we can't get them to conform to the forty-eight inch limitation. That's it in a, the short way. I'll work with Mr. Clemmons and try to get a meeting with the SuttonLink officials scheduled, and that's about it, unless you have questions for me. It's been a busy couple of weeks.
Questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. That brings us, Correspondence, Rent World noticed an order of hall demolition, it's in your package, you agreed that. And State Fire Marshal, Dave, you and I have talked about this just a little bit, the building code. It's in there, somebody says this from, that the State Fire Commission has filed a legislative rule, eighty-seven series four state bill and code, the Secretary of State's Office, relative to West Virginia Code eight, twelve, thirteen, and seven, one, three, N, and they've adopted new ordinance, and they're saying that each municipality and county wishing to adopt an four-state bill and code law will have to formally adopt a new additions by ordinance. We talked about that, you're still looking into that, or?
Yes, and I, Mayor, what I would suggest relative to this, and since we're heading down this path of potentially several ordinances in the next relatively short period of time, I think I had proposed sort of a formation of a committee that would include Mr. Martini, Mitch Tacey, Rich Clemmons, you and myself. It doesn't need to be a longstanding committee, but just a group of us that would be starting to get together to evaluate which direction Mr. Doss would be including in that, as to which direction the city wants to go with the adoption of these additional building codes. I think this electrical inspection ordinance that you're about to consider is the first step in that direction.
Well, we, I think part of conversation for everybody else's benefit is that they're saying that you have to formally adopt a new additions ordinance within one year and submit a copy to the State Fire Commission in order for us to be able to do it. But you were looking at our ordinance where we adopted the building codes, and it may include all future, but there was a question, but we'll get back to council on this. Short.
Absolutely.
This brings us to our consent agenda. That's approval amendments, rate of meeting of August fifteenth, joint meeting, County Commission on August twenty-ninth, building and wiring permits, improvement payment bills, and an approval of Zeta Tau Alpha Rest Cancer Awareness Request to decorate Main Street. There are motions to approve the consent agenda. Motion made, they're second. Second. Motion made, and second in any discussion or question. All favor, signify, seven, seven, aye.
Aye.
First reading ordinance three seventy-seven.
We've talked about this the last couple of meetings, and I think I set the table a couple of meetings before that, so we've been talking about electrical inspection for some time. And I don't want anybody to think that we haven't had any electrical inspection in recent years, we have, but this will result in a much more involved, thorough set of inspections that will occur with John Martini, our electrical inspector. Mitch Tacey has reviewed it closely and is completely on board. You heard from Mr. Martini, I think at the last council meeting, Mr. Clemmons has reviewed it. It's a collective recommendation of everyone that deals with fire safety and electrical inspections to advance this. This would be two reading ordinance. If you pass it on first reading tonight, tonight, when I get home, I'll prepare a legal notice with a letter to the Record of Delta that would be delivered tomorrow. There'd be a class-two legal ad as required by state code the next two Wednesdays, and then you would have a public hearing on this at your meeting on the nineteenth. But without further ado, my caption, ordinance number three seventy-seven of the city of Buchanan, and ordinance one, adopting the NFPA one, that is also known as the National Fire Code, two thousand nine edition, two, adopting the NFPA seventy, also known as the National Electrical Code, two thousand eight edition, three, adopting the NFPA one oh one, also known as the National Life and Safety Code, two thousand nine edition, four, defining electrical standards and inspections, five, establishing new fees for electrical inspections, six, establishing the city's Structural Electrical Safety Committee, and seven, amending ordinance number two forty-five of the city of Buchanan. The whereas is that I read to you last time, nothing has changed since the draft that was presented after the last meeting. Article one, the title of the ordinance, this ordinance shall be known as the city of Buchanan's Electrical Inspection and Fire Protection Ordinance. Article two, findings of council, they basically track the whereas paragraphs. Article three are a number of definitions that are applicable to the other articles of this ordinance. Article four describes the various types of electrical inspections and distinguishes commercial property from residential property. Article five sets forth the permanent fees for the electrical inspections. Article six incorporates and adopts state statutes and administrative rules and regulations. I want to be very clear about this. One of the points that Mitch Tacey, our fire chief, had raised was. One of the points that Mitch Tacey, our fire chief, had raised was the National Fire Protection Act has a whole bunch of things in it that don't have anything to do with electrical inspections. And they would typically be applicable to big cities, Charleston, Huntington, places like that that have 100 firefighters. Anytime a fire truck leaves under the National Fire Protection Act, you got to have at least four firefighters on the fire truck. And as everyone knows, we're lucky if we have two people at the fire station oftentimes when a truck is pulling out. So the council of the City of Buchanan, under this Article six, hereby expressly adopts and incorporates the provisions of NFPA 170 and 101 as administered by the State Fire Marshal's office insofar, but insofar only, as the provisions of each of the foregoing codes apply to electrical inspections, as though the provisions thereof were expressly set forth herein. So it's not all facets of our fire department. Maybe someday we'll have that luxury, but this is just relative to electrical inspections. Article seven, violations, penalties, and jurisdiction of city's municipal court and penalties for violation of the ordinance. Article eight are the exemptions. Any structure respecting which a building permit has been acquired prior to the effectuation date of this ordinance shall not be subject to the provisions of this ordinance, or rather shall be subject to those electrical inspection ordinances existing prior to this ordinance's effectuation. Article nine is the automatic adoption of future NFPA codes. As Mr. Martini explained to you last time, state of West Virginia, every couple of years as these new three-year amendments are made by NFPA, state of West Virginia sometimes is a year behind actually adopting those. So maybe as soon as next year, we'll be looking at new additions of these three major NFPA acts. This allows us to say, okay, we adopt whatever the most current thing is that the state of West Virginia has adopted, without having to do another amendatory ordinance every couple of three years. Article 10, establishment of structural electrical safety committee. And again, just to remind everyone what this is about, there is hereby formally established the City of Buchanan's Structural Electrical Safety Committee. Mr. Clemmons likes this SES thing because he's a Morse code fanatic. Hereafter referred to as the SES Committee, which shall consist of three members, being the duly-appointed city electrical inspector, the duly-appointed city fire chief, and the duly-appointed city housing enforcement officer. Article 11 is the standard separability article that we have in virtually all of our ordinances. Article 12 specifically amends our previous ordinances. And Article 13, the effective date would actually be October 19, which is 30 days after what would be the second reading and adoption of the ordinance on September 19. It is my strong recommendation to the council this evening that you approve on the first of two readings, ordinance 377 of the City of Buchanan.
Why so moved that we accept the approval on the first reading?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or question? All in favor of signify sub, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no? All right, so. We're going to have comments and announcements. It's the, again, tradition, we go down the same here. But does anybody out there have anything they'd like to offer, any questions you all might have? Do you'd like to ask any council members? Okay, Ron? Your turn.
Have a great weekend coming up, enjoy the local football and the good weather, and that's it.
Okay. No, nothing further than that. Rich? A couple of things. This evening, there was folks talking about concern of what's going on in the neighborhood. Remind folks that, and I know Record Delta publishes this number frequently, but there is a confidential tip line in Buchanan and Upshur County. It's area code 304, 473, 1001, 1001. And that is an anonymous line that's only received by police and city police and sheriff's office. It's paid for by the Rotary Club, but it's not recorded. You don't need to leave a name or number or anything, just helpful information.
No caller ID?
For law enforcement. There's no caller ID on it. 304, 473, 1001. We've had some issues the last couple of weeks about people needing permits. Please don't wait till the last minute. Come in ahead of time. If it's a flood zone, if it requires an asbestos inspection, whatever, it does take some time. I remind council, we all need to decide this evening, but we probably have to decide at our next meeting. October 31st will fall on a Thursday night. So is that when you want to do trick or treat? And 6 to 7 has been the typical time, but we need to pick that date if it's not 31st. Also, that happens to be a fifth Thursday, so is there going to be a joint meeting that night?
We'll have a hell of a party.
Yeah. I could say something about Ron, though. I do miss my sparring partner, Dave Thomas. He's a little under the weather, but hopefully he's back soon and we can continue our routine of poking at each other. That's all I have. John?
Just welcome to Western students being here. Just want to take it in the last couple of years, students have brought ideas here that have turned into ordinances. Students have brought things here that have been things the city of it has implemented. Tonight, we offered to put up declarations of the students that are classed. So if you ever want to do something or have an idea, want to do a fundraiser, have things you'd like to see the city do, feel free to bring in those things to us.
We welcome your input. Pam?
I have nothing to say.
Remind you all again, this intergovernmental agreement, you need to look at this. And if there are comments you need to make, we need to be prepared to press on this. It's an essential hurdle we have to cross. Dave Thomas is under the weather, he's had some surgery, and he's doing okay. That's all I have. Anybody else have anything else to offer for the good of the order? Louie, Jerry? Don't have to, I'll declare a adjournment.